Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us with our Board of Select meeting on January 27th. And keeping with our agenda, Tina, do we have a warrant?
We do. We have a warrant. Excuse me. I'll fiddle around up there. We have a warrant tonight for $1,607,945.97, of which the school payroll is $1,252,893.33, and the town payroll is $153,606.90.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment? Tina?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, so I think most folks are aware that I went to the Massachusetts Municipal Associations Conference this weekend, and I took away a lot. And so the first thing that I wanted to do was to thank Jeff Ritter, our town administrator, and Sean Reese for their efforts in the MVP grant program as well as the Complete Streets program. It was made very clear this weekend by the governor and by many others that both of these programs have a strong state commitment and are important for strong towns into the future. And both Sean and Jeff have worked very hard in both of those areas to make it a reality for the town of Holliston. So I really wanted to thank both of them for having that foresight and commitment on behalf of the town of Holliston. I also wanted to update the board that I talked at length this weekend with city councilors from Framingham, and I'll be reaching out to them, looking to meet with them to have discussions about how an expansion of the rail trail into Sherburne and into Framingham could benefit both communities. We'll see how that goes, but they were very receptive this weekend to starting that conversation. And finally, I wanted to share this graphic in anticipation of the discussion we'll have later in the evening on some of the positive trends and changes from the new trash program that was introduced on July 1st. So, I don't know, this is kind of fun for me. I like to do this. So I created this little graphic here that shows the trend in the amount of tonnage being produced by the town of Holliston over time. It starts back in August of 2018, and it ends with the most recent wheel abrader data from the end of December. So you can see that we're clearly trending down. And what's, I think, most significant when you look at the numbers is that Holliston produced 314 fewer tons of solid waste in the first six months of the new trash program compared to the same period last year. And this has saved the town over $21,000 so far in fiscal year '21. So I'm really looking forward to the discussion later tonight with the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee on ways to build on these positive trends. So that's all I have for public comment.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
John?
Just minor updates. Met with Chief Stone last week to go over a first run of his FY '21 budget proposal. I don't think this board will find too many difficulties with what he's offering. He is a little over target right now, given some issues associated with built-in collective bargaining costs and so forth. But as always, Chief Stone put together an excellent presentation. I think we'll be seeing him in a couple weeks. Met with Sean Reese last Wednesday morning. He's back from bereavement leave, and we reset a meeting time, I think, for next week to meet with Erica, whose name I already forget, last name, to discuss further detail discussion of the three public work articles that we've supported, most recently in the fall town meeting, related to improved sidewalks, water replacement plan, and DPW facility. I believe Erica can give us some, give me a good head start into the details that the finance committee was craving, so it'll help us as we prepare for the spring town meeting.
And you're also kind enough to work on the new CFO job description?
Yeah, that's on your agenda, Mr. Chairman, so I'll give everyone an update on that.
Excellent.
Just about that.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to remind folks that the soup per bowl is this Saturday night, and I know I reminded you last week, but it's an important event for the food pantry. We have several restaurants who donate the soup and the bread, and a lot of people donate their time, and all the proceeds go to the food pantry at a time of year when they really need the money. And I won't be there, as we will be having a retirement party for my wife Saturday night, so I won't be able to be there, but I wish everyone well and hope that it goes well.
I'll be there.
Jeff?
I will be there. I think I'd like to be Linda Aronian. She's had quite a few parties, it seems, Linda, recently.
Jeff, anything for public comment?
I'm looking right now.
Anyone from the audience with public comment? No? Okay, thank you. Report of our town administrator, please.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick report here for you this evening. Next week on your agenda, your pub will be seeing a request for a reserve fund transfer for the Nine Green Street Committee. This is a follow-up for your meeting from last week where they are requesting $13,500 for Lord Associates to start working on the LSP services. So you'll see that probably next week on your agenda.
Great.
I'll be meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00 with the DPW union, and we'll be going over some of the requests that they have coming forward. It's very, very early in the process at the moment, but we are starting that discussion tomorrow morning at 10:00. I met this afternoon with myself and our technology director and our DPW director and our building inspector with our, hopefully newly hired, facilities manager, Chris Pezza.
Pezy.
Pezy. And so I have a letter prepared, and I circulated that to the board, offering him the position, and I anticipate hearing from him tomorrow morning after he goes through the benefits package with his wife tonight.
Excellent.
So hopefully next week I'll be able to tell you that the letter has been signed. We have a start date, and he'll be up and running.
Right.
And I, we'll just say for the record that, you know, our DPW director is fully on board with this. He was very enthusiastic about getting him, meaning Chris, on board and taking a lot of things off of his plate that he needs to deal with.
Absolutely.
So I will keep the board informed about that. Just so the residents know, there have been several calls that I've received in my office about, from several energy companies seeking that they switch from Eversource to other companies for their electricity, and I would not advise that to happen at this point in time. We have a very good, solid contract with Colonial Power to provide discounted electrical rates, and I would urge residents not to take these solicited phone calls or switch their electricity to another provider. Town council will be here on Wednesday morning at 10:00, and I'll be inviting several department heads to come and meet with town council to talk about several outstanding issues. Finally, there'll be a meeting here on Thursday at 3:00 with Beth Greenblatt and Soul Systems, and we're going to be reviewing the timeframe for the rollout of the solar field project at the Lamptill.
Excellent.
So I believe the board has posted, in case you have a quorum present.
Okay. So we could go to either one of those meetings, Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. or Thursday, 3:00 p.m.?
Wednesday, I'd not posted you.
Okay.
But certainly one of them, one of you are welcome to be present.
Okay.
And that's all I have for now.
Jeff, I have one quick question about a scout troop that was looking to hold a fundraiser at Blair Square for a pollinator project.
Yep.
It came up at the Trails Committee meeting, and I just wanted to follow up on that. They asked if they needed permission from the board, and I actually did not know the answer to whether or not a fundraiser for a scout troop could be held at Blair Square.
Could be held there, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. And that's all you have, sir?
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Any questions, John?
Yes, sir.
Budget, budgets. We have a treasurer, collector, and town accountant. If you would like to come up, that would be great. She's trying to hide in the back there, but we see her.
I'm going to get out here before I start coughing. Want to do the treasurer collector budget first?
Sure.
Okay. We came in on budget. The administrative salaries for FY '21, we're requesting 102, 144. Administrative assistants, 99,972, and that is for the assistant treasurer and the assistant collector. They're both on steps. Clerical salaries, we have 127,800, and that is for three principal clerks. They're all new and all on steps. Longevity, $250. I'm the only one that has longevity and new certification stipend for being a certified treasurer collector is $1,000. Professional services, we have $22,000, and that covers the printing of our bill, all of our bills. It includes our Unibank fee for offering online payments. We've increased that a little bit.
And that helps the school department, too, right?
That covers the fee for the school department, every department except for water.
Except for water.
Water. And we are trying to expand our services in the school, so we bumped it up a little bit. Professional foreclosure legal is $20,453, and that is to take care of our tax-taking that we do annually and to do the foreclosure process on our tax total accounts. Communications is $12,500, and that's to cover the phone and our legal ad. Office supplies is the same as last year, is $5,000. Professional development is up to $3,500 from 2,000 because there are three of us that need to attend the treasurer collector's school in August.
Excellent.
And that is the treasurer collector budget.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Do you have any questions?
One, and it's just curiosity, do the square payments, does that fall under the professional services, that new policy that was rolled out, the new square?
Right. Every department that uses a square will be responsible for theirs. Like the park department, they get the net.
Okay. That's right.
And this falls within the 1% guideline?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Very good.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is the treasurer collectors' conference in, is it in Bermuda?
No, it's UMass Amherst, Compostion.
I think he wanted to tag along if you watched.
We don't really get to go anyplace really good. It's either the Cape or Amherst.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed FY '21 treasurer's budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
And then we have the debt budget. Professional services, we have $4,000, and that's for our continuing disclosure. Principal on long-term debt is $2,750,000. Interest on the long-term debt is $302,118. We have general interest, which is $2,500, and that is for interest that we may have to pay on appellate tax board cases, for a grand total of $3,58,618.
Okay. Questions, John?
Is that down from last year, Mary?
It, I guess it is, about $2 million.
And what is expected to look like in FY '22?
FY '22, it should be down a little more because we have a few more things paying off.
In the event that our bond rating changes, will that affect how much money we pay in interest, potentially?
Not, not, maybe going forward, maybe 25 basis points if we're upgraded from AA+ to AAA.
On the debt we're currently servicing?
No, on the debt that we're currently reserving, it stays where it is. Future debt.
And when do we expect to hear about that?
Our rating call is scheduled for 10:00 on February 5th, and we should have something either by the end of the week or the beginning of the following week.
Just incidentally, Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Mary last week, I think it was, and from the conversation, I made a recommendation to Mr. Ritter to place in the town warrant a placeholder to create a stabilization account to hold fees associated with, help me, the --
Cannabis.
Cannabis control, which was its own stabilization. And the one that the gentleman --
Retirement.
Right. So our Middlesex County retirement is currently in arrears, several million dollars, separate from OPEB.
Right.
And we make anecdotal payments to that debt. This advisor mentioned to Mary, if we create a separate stabilization fund, deposit funds into it, and make large, one-time payments from time to time, that would have a more favorable view by the rating agency. So it's, I'm sure you have that penciled into the warrant at this point, but we'll have the conversation with the finance committee, too, when we get downstream with that.
That sounds great.
The funding of Middlesex retirement could be the one holdback, possibly, of us going to a AAA. Is what they're, they're not saying it will happen, but they've seen it happen in other communities like ours. Because they're one of the underfunded retirement systems.
If we get this organized, like John was saying, they, I'm sure, would look favorable.
Well, I mean, I'm sure --
It will look favorable on us, but they look at the retirement as a whole.
Right, and the risk it presents, yeah.
Right.
I mean, they must know, and you must have presented to them the fact, that we've made aggressive steps to deal with the OPEB unfunded liability to a very large extent. So the Middlesex retirement debt is much smaller and easily more, I think, achievable.
Our piece is manageable, the entire system, unfortunately.
Right, right, right. But I do think that, you know, with some structural changes, we can start to tackle that in the same manner, without much disruption to it all.
Do you mind explaining to the residents back home what our long-term debt is remaining and what it's taking care of?
Sure. The long-term debt, we have, we have long-term debt on the golf course. That will be paid in full on May 1st, 2021. We have the town hall. That will be paid in full on May 1st, 2021. The police station will be paid in full on May 15, 2029. The middle school will be paid in full on April 1st, 2022, and the high school will be paid in full on May 1st, 2023. Sewer debt will be paid in full on April 1st, 2022, and 1750 Washington Street will be paid in full on August 1st, 2020.
Right. What year did we renovate the high school for the residents? Was it?
It was in the 1990s.
98, 99?
I want to say, no.
99, 2000, right around there.
Right around there.
Yeah, we were doing a ladder baring for all the schools, and we did sewer all at the same time.
Right. Did it all the same time.
What date was that?
The 1990s.
1999, 2000.
1990?
End of the last century.
99, 2000.
I can't get, I can look up the exact date for you, but that was a long, as far as I'm concerned, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, time goes by, doesn't it?
It does.
So, okay. Any questions, Gina?
No, I'm okay.
You're okay?
So make a motion to approve the FY '21 debt budget as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Our town accountant is here, Sharon. She's another very busy person. And keep us all, our heads above water.
We're doing our best. Okay. All right, so we have my salary, which is $97,645. Clerical salary is 42, 134 is the $1,000 certification stipend for being certified town accountant. The communication line is 1,075. That's just paying for our phones. That's the only thing that's coming out of there. Professional services is $32,000. That's our annual audit. It's the same price as last year. Didn't go up. Then I think we've got one more year at this. He gave us three years without raising the price.
Annual is the whole program that you --
Yes. It does. It does the whole general side of it. He does a special audit for the school end-of-year report, which the school pays for. This covers the books that are on our side. Office supplies, level funded, 550 bucks, and professional development, 700 bucks.
Okay. Any questions, John?
Overall, what's the percent increase?
We are, let's see, we are actually down 1.46%. That's the clerical from where new staff is compared to where the steps that my last clerk was on.
I see.
So there's a savings on that.
Oh. She's going to get a star. Tina?
No questions.
No questions.
No, good.
Any questions, Jeff?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY '21 budget as proposed by the town accountant.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Auxiliary police, please. If you don't mind introducing yourself to the folks back home.
George Laurini, I'm a lieutenant with the Holliston Police Department, and I'm also the director of the Holliston Auxiliary Police Department.
Right. Pull the mic a little bit closer to you. Go right ahead, sir.
Sure. I've got to say, I'm very fortunate to lead the Holliston Auxiliary Police Department. The men and women on there, they volunteer their time. They don't get paid to come out to do the services. I was very fortunate, again, about two years ago, the town said, what do I need to increase our staff? When I started in 2003, there was 21 auxiliary officers. Two years ago, we went all the way down to seven.
Wow.
So since then till now, I was able to hire five more auxiliary officers. Four of them are in field training right now, and three are in the academy. So we're starting to go in the right direction on that one. The auxiliary police is also a stepping stone to go to full-time. So we have a lot of members that come on as auxiliary, and then they're moving up to the full-time position. So the newest officer that we have is Officer Hannah C. Avara for the full-time police department. She came from the auxiliary police department.
Hey, that's great.
So, so last year, we did a total of 908 hours in shift work, cruiser work, training, town events, out-of-town events, and assist with the emergency calls. If we had to hire a police officer to all these events, it would have cost approximately So when the staff increases more, there'd be more savings on the other end. For the budget, the 1%, I added to our professional development. So I went from 6,210 to 6,348. And then I got my vehicle maintenance, which stays the same, which is 190 for last year and current. And for supplies, it stays the same, at 7,364. So last year, Corporal Donovan Say had the most hours on the department. He had 139 hours, and Officer Daniel Lee had the second amount of hours, at 113. So at the end, this is more of the events that we cover. So we do the, we cover the Celebrate Holliston, Ashland Day celebration, Tim's Trot, Turkey Trot, Neighboring Helping Neighbors. So we cover approximately 15 to 20 events a year, which is all volunteer time. Any questions? Thoughts, concerns?
John?
What was the count, again, of the number of volunteers in this?
So right now, I have 16 right now.
And do you know how, is that the same number you've had last year, or is it down?
Actually, it's higher. Last year, I only had seven. Officer C. Avara resigned to go to the full-time position, and we have another officer who's taken a leave of absence to further his education.
When you backfill any of those positions, who pays for the training associated with that?
The auxiliary unit does. I have my, that's through the budget.
The training budget?
Yeah.
So does your budget accommodate need to provide that training in FY '21 for some of these backfills?
Yes, that's how it does.
Okay. And in terms of vehicles, what are they using right now?
We have our own cruiser. We have Car 16, which is the auxiliary cruiser. So we have two-man cars, and that's what they use.
16 is not in the chief's plans for recycle or deadlining, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Gina?
The auxiliary training is separate from the professional development?
No, it's the same.
Okay.
It's the same.
What, okay.
So I have to look ahead, and a lot of what happens is, a lot of our full-time officers are certified through the MPTC, and they volunteer their time to train the Holliston auxiliaries. So I get to save on that end.
I am really impressed and humbled, too. A lot of people have said to me since joining the board, boy, you volunteer a lot of your time. You don't get paid for that. And I said, no, no, of course not, no. But I don't think I'm anywhere near any of your auxiliary police officers and officers to the town, especially not Corporals Say and Officer Lee. It's very impressive and humbling, and it's also incredibly impressive how they are the face of Holliston police, given the number of events that they attend.
They know a lot of the residents by name.
Yeah.
And they know them.
Well, please thank them, of course, as always, but I'm blown away, humbled, and impressed.
I don't have any questions, but I, too, want to thank your entire staff, if anyone could pass the word.
Okay.
Much appreciated. John?
Make a motion to accept and approve the FY '21 auxiliary police budget as presented by Lieutenant Laurini.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George Laurini.
Can I just say something? I want to thank Lieutenant Laurini, and I also want to thank, you know, Mary Bousquet for all of the extraordinary work, and also our town council.
Yes.
They presented very thoughtful budgets, and they're key people within our staff, and you can't say enough about them for their commitment and their work.
Very nice. Thank you. Yes, do you have a question, Sharon?
Yes, I do. The selectmen's budget that you approved the other night, had a couple of things missing. It didn't have longevity in it, and it didn't, it didn't have your board salaries in it, your whopping salaries. I can make copies if you want. I have a corrected version here. I don't know if you just wanted to take a quick vote.
I don't, I don't take a salary at all, so.
No, I know. It's in the budget, just in case. I don't know what you want to do.
Jeff, do we have to take that out, can we take that out of turn and make a vote on that if it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, you can. It's part of the budget discussion.
Yeah. You want, I would recommend we bring her up and square away some numbers.
Sure. Come on up, Sharon. Make us look good, please.
Well, it's too bold, so the, my first pass at this, I had actually looked at the wrong line for Donna's salary at one point, which Andrea caught, so I fixed Donna's salary. But the, I did notice that the board salaries and the longevity were not in your budget that, that had got sent to me as your approved budget.
Okay.
So your new corrected bottom line is $317,372.
317, 372?
317, 372. And I can email this to all of you if you would like, so you have a corrected copy.
So if I recall correctly, Mr. Ritter, that budget included an proposed increase for legal fees, did it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that, and that by itself put us over the 1% guideline?
Yes.
What, what's the percent you're at there?
Now we are at 5.14.
Driven by the legal fees?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we never really know from year to year what the legal fees are going to be for extraordinary expenses.
I just want to make it clear that my salary is zero. I really do feel like I need to make that clear, and I also need an explanation. Can you just explain the longevity item, line item?
Longevity, so that's what, that would be Donna and Andrea, if you're, and I don't, if you're here for --
Oh, here's your service.
But here's your service, I'm sorry.
Got it. Okay, all right. I was thinking you were talking about the three of us.
Oh, no, no, no.
I don't know why I was thinking that, but I just needed an explanation.
No, no, you three haven't been here long enough to earn longevity.
So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
To amend?
To amend the approval to the new Board of Selectmen's FY '21 appropriation of $317,372.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you for...
And I will send you a corrected copy.
Thank you for the correction. You're welcome.
Oh, actually, and while we're on budgets, here's my one other thought. I gotta get this stuff in front of me. Next week, you have conservation and veterans and that's it. And apparently, youth and family has gotten moved to February 10th. That's fine if you want, but February 10th for you guys is jam-packed, I don't know if you want to make any phone calls and see if somebody can jump up a week.
I'll leave that up to the town administrator.
Jeff?
Figure that out, figure that out.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Sharon.
Want to make you aware.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next up, we have a sustainability committee, if you'd like to come on up, Mike. And talk to us about the direction of composting, tech tops, textiles, mattresses, that sort of thing.
So it, the mattresses are one of the things that they've looked at as far as grant opportunities. It may be something, actually, we're discussing with Matt.
Oh, could you just say your name, Andrew?
Sure, Mike Lavin, 200 Gerald Street.
Right.
The rest of the committee, we weren't able to get all timed this together, we were actually trying to have a meeting last week and I actually had a family emergency and we wasn't able to come in. So, and the committee couldn't come in tonight, so I wanted to make sure we had a face with the committee. There's a group of us that are doing it and I know, I want to make sure that we recognize everybody who's part of this process. You know, I'd like to start out by saying thanks for putting that first slide together.
I think that's fantastic, too, those are some of the untangibles we talked about, that, you know, we know we would save, have a savings, just in immediate contract savings.
And those are the savings that we'd hope to see by the, by the program that the board decided to move with. So I'm glad to see that those numbers are actually coming to fruition, you know, and hopefully we continue to stay on that track. You know, some of the things that we've taken a look at has been, it would be the textile recycling, we had Simply Recycling come in and do the presentation with the board. That is something that I've actually rolled out for the town of Rentham now. It went seamless, absolutely fantastic. The only, the only hiccup we had was folks with post office boxes, because we didn't have a way to figure out how to mail the bags to them. Other than that, it actually was a completely seamless rollout, they did all the work, the bags are out there. I've spoken with Kathy Merzer and, you know, they're averaging, it's, you know, 10 pounds a year per household kind of a thing is another way of reduction. And really, it's, make it easy. If we can make it easy for residents, then, you know, hopefully we'll get a higher participation. Part of that is the education of what textiles are, like we've discussed before, it's not necessarily that thing you think you're going to see at the store that people are going to wear. You know, it just can't be clean, it can't be dirty, really. It, you know, can't be wet, can't be moldy, other than that, there's a whole bunch of uses that can be made from these types of things. And it also could draw a small revenue stream, you know, so again, another one of these things that, hey, we could reduce, I think the savings is in the reduction, not throwing away. But there also may become a small revenue stream from it as well, too. The other thing, again, we're kind of going to the mattresses, is what I really was talking with Matt about, is it might be a good opportunity to take a look at what we're doing at our drop-off center. And see, make sure that we're, we're kind of getting the efficiencies that we need up there. You know, because we can look at some of them, I know that our highway division runs that, so it'd be great to see, you know, how are we handling our metal? Are we getting the best rate for our metal, that type of stuff. You know, just kind of taking a look at how things are going up there, you know, on that same vein, it would be great to, again, to look at Black Earth, who's in town now, providing just a little over 100 households curbside service. At this point, it does, it does cost a little bit more than if they just brought their bags and threw it away. So we'd love to see them come in and possibly look at that operation. And speaking with Matt, that's something he's worked with the company before and reviewing this for other communities. So I think that it's a prime kind of a thing to look at, to see, can we bring this into our community and create another opportunity for our residents? Maybe even reduce some of our operating costs for the facility, because there may be work that the highway department has to do now, that they may do, and then reduce that curbside cost. So there are some things, I think, some regulatory things and things like that, we need to take a look at, just to make sure we're all, we're in line. But I think those are sort of the things that we're kind of hoping to continue to look at and, you know, I'm going to really want to thank the board for, you know, kind of sticking it through. Particularly the town administrator's office, that first month of the transition was difficult. You know, it's a major change, it affects every single household in town.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and six months in, we've seen the dust has settled and, you know, it seemed to have become sort of a norm in our community and the calls have slowed down now and, you know, people have kind of learned to adapt, so.
The barrels are outstanding, too, they don't blow over, they're just so much better than what we used to use.
It's, it's a lot of what it was built to be, I mean, you know, they wind tunnel test these things to sit at 45 miles an hour. I mean, I've seen there's been a couple of storms where the lids have opened up and made a little bit, but, you know, compared to having four or five bins out front with the stuff inside of it, it, you know, was all over the neighborhood.
Yeah, it was terrible.
You know, so I think that's another one of the great, you know, sort of intangibles we talk about, you know, that, you know, it cleans up the neighborhood, it's consistent, it's equitable. And I think all around, it proved to be a pretty good program. I think we do need to be cautious and keep watching the recycling market. You know, that becomes the cost that is really everybody's sort of elephant in the room, is that market is trying to figure out where it's going to mature, where it's going to happen, how they're going to deal with that in the future. It's becoming more and more expensive and we're seeing that with the processors, I mean, we, there are communities now, again, I think we've got a great deal with Harveys. Is there a community paying, you know, 80, 120, $140 a ton for their recycling? So I think we're significantly less than that, I think, again, that shows that we had a great, a great bid out there and aggressive bidder and had a good process. So, you know, we know we're saving, but I think we need to keep that thought in the back of our mind.
Right, right.
You know, that, that market is changing and it is a variable rate, so it's just something to think about, is, you know, kind of watch that market, because it could be a cost to us that we need to prepare. But I think hopefully right now, the savings are offsetting costs and we're sort of stabilized, so.
Right, right. Matt, do you want to come up and add to the discussion? And just tell the residents, you can speak in this mic, your name and what you do.
Yes, I'm Matt Zedek, new sustainability coordinator for the town. First off, I want to thank the board for your trust that I'll be able to assist the town. Since I'm opening up with Mr. Ritter last week and getting the official word and signing up, I've really enjoyed getting to know the folks and including having the conversation with Mike.
Great.
The committee, the committee there has just been doing really nice work, as you know. And I just wanted to support what was mentioned both by Mike and the members of the board, talking about the recent program that was implemented this past summer. That 314 tons that didn't go to the incinerator meant you had a lot more tax dollars that didn't get burned.
Yeah.
As you had Millbury, that you could use for local resources, local programs and things. So that's a good reason why you'd want to do that type of program. You mentioned the carts, just providing it just a better way of doing business in the town. I heard about the litter going around, when you have a manual program and it ties in with the overall sustainability approach that I type, I bring to the town. The litter doesn't just blow out of the, out of the recycle bin or out of your loose bag.
Yeah.
Where the crows were picking at it.
Right.
Then it's up somewhere, it's going into the storm drain, it's clogging up the storm drain, the DPW has to come and clean, it's going into the wetlands, it's doing other things. So you just get these little trickle-down impacts, when the board and the town makes a good, solid decision to move forward with the program. It's nice that you're coming in with this six-month update and it is, looking forward to building on it with some of these other programs that'll help reduce how much waste is being generated in Holliston. And potentially also increase a little bit on the revenue side, so.
Right.
Really looking forward to assisting on those efforts and thank the board for the good support of these type of initiatives.
John, any questions for Matt or Mike?
No, thanks for all your good work, very impressive numbers so far. The one takeaway I have is that as we kind of look forward, I'd love to see our recycling center kind of grow to the next stage of usability and friendliness. The, the existing program's limited with the amount of hours that we provide. Have we hired the new person and are we open now Saturdays and Sundays, right?
Saturdays.
Saturdays, I'd like to see that become a more vibrant center for all kinds of recycling. And that starts with maybe some of the resources that we're saving on a smaller level being pointed there. If you haven't been up to the landfill, I invite you to...
I haven't been when it's been open, I did, I've been by for a drive-through, so.
Yeah.
I'm not a resident of the town, so they shut me, no, I don't.
Well, we know people, so we get you in. That's where my mind will be going, you know, as far as town resources and the ability to grow something for the convenience of our taxpayers. I think it's an area that could use some, some tender loving care, thank you.
Excellent, Tina, any questions?
Yeah, I think that we are, we appear to be so close to the textile recycling and that they came, they presented, they had some very good suggestions, there was a review of a contract. So we seem very close in that regard, Black Earth is in town, residents who are using it appear to be very satisfied with it and there's interest in growing that as well. So in my mind, at least, we appear fairly close to expanding on that service in our town. And I'm just wondering how the committee and Matt as sustainability coordinator will coordinate together to push us over the edge from being so close to having these services in town, to actually having these services in town. And what the board can expect from, from like a timeline for that collaboration, so that we can tip over and, again, have those services available. If you're not ready to answer that, that's fine, but I, that's what I'm most curious to know about.
I think we could kind of give you a quick Reader's Digest of that, I mean, Matt and I actually had a great conversation today.
We've only had a week to know, it says, it's my bill of remittance.
And we've met previously, you know, in another community, really talking about this exact same program. So, you know, so I think we're very like-minded as, as far as seeing these programs and seeing them successful and knowing where we want to go. I think there's a lot of dovetail together with Matt's sustainability mission, as well as our traction recycling mission. And, you know, that's why we added that sustainability to the front of the committee and gave it that kind of big, long word, really, because we didn't want it to be lost and this is just recycling. You know, it's really that whole big picture. And it goes just exactly to what Mr. Korn said, where's our next best opportunity where we can, where we can actually look at? And that was one of the things that I talked about, is we could certainly collaborate, you know, he has a lot of industry contacts, I have some as well, too, and we can start to sort of reach out to folks and try to take a look at that. And I think we'd need to speak with Mr. Ritter, too, so we engage the DPW, because I think they also need to be part of that conversation where they manage our facility.
In terms of textile and composting?
Well, in just the facility, it's just at that facility. So composting, that's, that's that facility. So I, I think that may open up some of those other opportunities.
With Black Earth?
Yeah, because they've actually discussed coming in and possibly managing that part of the facility.
So in your mind, you see needing to coordinate or talk to or understand better from the DPW point of view what's going on at the recycling center?
Absolutely.
Before advancing anything with Black Earth?
I, I think we absolutely do, I think that it's important to engage them early in that process. You know, because, you know, it's something they've been doing for a long time, so we don't, we don't need to reinvent the wheel with things that are happening. And I, and I think it's really important that, you know, the people that are managing and are involved in, in, other than that. You know, I've managed composting facilities myself, so I know what it is. You know, and as far as the textiles, I think that's still, it's something that's sort of pretty much ready to go. I know one of the concerns was single vendor, you know, we've done more research on that, they're still, still the only vendor. I have confirmed with Kathy Merzer from SDOT, is there anybody even close on the market that might come out here? And at this point, there isn't. My largest concern is that they're going to become saturated and they're not going to need anybody else, because they're going to grow to a point where we've basically got to the max that they can, they can accommodate. So they're reevaluating that this spring, so I know they will not be able to do, they won't be able to roll out a program until the spring now. So we had, we had our opportunity there in the fall, you know, we had some questions, we really wanted to make sure things went well. You know, I certainly have a much better confidence of having now rolled it out and it would, it was seamless, it really went very easily, you know.
Just a clarification, the reason it didn't get off the ground in the fall was more legal. The, the company and our council could not agree on the language for contracts and it just timed out.
Sure.
They had a deadline and...
Absolutely, and that's where they were saying, hey, we got to do it there. And, you know, and I actually don't like to, hey, to decide today and, or you can't have it. Well, you know, I think, I think particularly with legal counsel and that they have some concerns when they're, yeah, yeah. Because I know there were things that I absolutely changed in that contract that I didn't like to. So I'm not sure if we're both, if we're changing the same things and maybe that's why they were more amenable to me, because there were some things in there that I absolutely changed.
I was a little surprised when I said that, because the gentleman from the company said that he had worked with Talman and Mead and some of the attorneys that we use. And he didn't seem to think it was going to be a high hill to climb, but like I said, it just timed out, they didn't have the opportunity, go ahead, Matt.
If I may, this is one particular project I have some experience in and I know the town has been, it really wants to make this happen. So I look forward to maybe checking with town council to see what some of those impediments were and working with either with that particular vendor, but also looking at some other potential opportunities.
Jeff's got the emails on those.
I'm a big believer in trying to make sure you really flesh out all the opportunities that would make sense for the town and again, ties it with the sustainability, you know, title behind the name, so.
Absolutely.
I know some of my concerns were they wanted sort of exclusivity and I had a problem with that. So we did change that, so I don't know if that was one of your hiccups, but I had a problem with their exclusivity, particularly where we have, you know, Bay State Textiles at our high school and they have their, sort of their own program. I'm not sure if our friends at our library have their own program, but, but I don't think that it's fair to come in there and say, well, you know, you have to go with these guys now at a penny a pound, or they have a better deal going on down there in another event. So they did acquiesce to that, so that they did not, they only did, they only did exclusivity curbside.
Yeah.
And not at an event, so that, you know, so I, I think that may very well, because then I know that was what jumped out as a problem contractually for me.
Definitely check with him, Matt, find out where I left off, I would encourage you to pick the ball up and call him again.
And timing's perfect.
It's almost spring.
Yeah, well, that's it, I think timing's perfect.
I was going to say, do you need to think it was spring?
Or other folks as well?
I can't hear you.
Or other potential folks that provide a similar service or...
I'm a firm believer in putting everything out to bid, when in doubt, bid it. But as Mike pointed out, we learn the market is very narrow. But I think if, if you have a dialogue with them, find out what kind of hurdles they were looking at. I would strongly recommend you talk to Mr. Ritter about putting out to, if they're ready, put out a bid and see and test the market.
If I may, one of the nice, and I, well, thank you for that good guide there, the nice thing about this particular type of a service is that it's, there's some extra flexibility for municipalities, because of the exemption from 30B for these type of services. And that's something I've, probably because of my background, living in the Middle East, I love the art of negotiation. And I really, I'm trying to maximize how many vendors can potentially go for a service. And this type of thing, it may not be a procurement process, but maybe letters of interest and making, you just get setting it, so everything, it's a level playing field that each vendor would go for, but it's a type of thing.
Some level of competition, that's right.
Wasn't, sorry, I don't want to keep going on about this, but wasn't there something about, from Black Earth to say that they actually do free textile collection as one of the ser... Is that what you, yeah, okay.
That's partly why I wanted to explore that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Why have a separate company if you've got one doing the similar service?
Well, because they're...
And they're reducing emissions as well, part of my, it's not, a big part of what my goal is, with coming on board of the town is, one of our actions oftentimes has another impact and another part of the service and type of things. I mean, the carts and the things blowing into the wetlands.
Right.
On this one as well, I mean, we don't want to have extra vehicles driving around town looking for stuff, potentially if we can have a, go to a place where they know something is. There are lots of factors involved in this, but I really look forward to fleshing it out more.
And as John said, expand the time that it's open a little bit, yeah.
Last comment on, on Black Earth, not to, again, harp on it, but I, I am curious to know about the cost savings if they handle the recycling up at the compost, the compost, rather, up at the recycling center. That is not something I think this board's had a lot of information on, that I've at least heard. So, you know, in taking on the composting piece at the recycling center, what does that end up saving the town for the DPW in terms of maintaining that? That's something I think would be helpful and useful information. The other one is, Jeff, I believe when we last talked about this as a board, there was some conversation about a part of the contract with Harvey that was for annual leaf pickup. And we were possibly going to look to renegotiate that if we went with Black Earth, correct me if I'm wrong on the details on this, please. I believe it was quoted at $14,000 at the time for...
This year, we paid about, about $14,000.
And if I have it correct, we would not be doing that if we went with Black Earth, we would renegotiate that contract, that piece of the contract with Harvey and save our town some money in that regard.
I'm not sure if Black Earth does leaf collections or not.
They don't really do leaf collections, but we'll, it's all part of the puzzle, we'll put the pieces together. We'll find a way to make it as cost-effective and try to expand the services. Well, I think you pointed out a good thing, that you can potentially expand the services and not have it be an increase of costs.
Right.
You can actually perhaps even bring in some additional revenue and reduce the amount of waste that's going to that incinerator, like the whole effort's been about. So it's really a good program, if you put in place that you can really build on with some exciting things.
Yeah, very good. And this is probably a really good time to thank our state representative Carolyn Dykema for all the work she did to help attain this funding for the sustainability coordinator. Because this is going to make, you know, an exciting difference, change for our town, especially being, tying in with, with the recycling committee and others. It kind of pulls it all together, so thank you Carolyn Dykema for looking out for the town of Holliston. Thank you.
Reasonable to think that another six-month update will include some of this stuff?
I think that might be in shorter, shorter than preseason.
Yeah, I think you're coming in monthly, actually.
Next week.
Okay, great.
Nice to see you anyways, Matt.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, we got some board business. We got a performance evaluation from Mr. Ritter. And we have a sample evaluation form, do you want to talk about the normal process, Jeff? What do we do with that? I think we...
Go ahead. I'll talk about it, so I think we're, we're looking to replicate the process that we started last year, which is to review Mr. Ritter based on, I think it's about 18 anchors of his job description and we rate them. Once we individually rate them, we submit them sealed to the town clerk's office. And then at some date, the chairman will meet with Mr. Ritter and open up the documents and review them with him. It, it's an effort to keep the matter discreet yet professional and represents the board's feelings on his performance over the last year. It's a component of his contract, it calls for the evaluation at this time. So as, as you probably know, I sent the form to Mr. Ritter last week and I think he promptly forwarded it to the group, so I have mine done, so I'll get it to Mr., I'll get it to the town clerk this week.
You better get on the ball, huh?
I submitted mine to Liz today.
All right, I'll get mine done.
Get on it.
Get on it.
And then it's your job.
All right.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Well, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And now that you're already talking, how about talking about the finance director position?
Sure, okay. So I have a draft job description that is really a compilation of a lot of different sources. As I've mentioned to this board, this board took a vote back in, I think it was early December, to create the opportunity for the process. I formed a working group and we met on December 13th. That included Mr. Badeh from Schools, Mr. Ritter, Mr. Murphy from the FinCom, and Ms. Busque. We've already talked about what that working group contributed. Following that meeting, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Ritter, myself, all did various levels of sourcing of the area's financial leader positions. There were, I think, a total of 17 job descriptions that I've read through, and I've tried to compile the relevant job description to a chief financial officer position. Out of the 17 towns that I looked at, they use the word finance director and chief financial officer interchangeably, but there are other occasions where the finance director is explicitly the town accountant. So there are levels to the authority. We're seeking more of an executive level position, and dare I say, an assistant town manager, or one that certainly would act as one in the event the town administrator was unavailable. We furthermore, I think, envision this position to not only oversee the financial systems, but the human resource systems. That's the piece that this particular community sorely needs. I understand a lot of it falls on the town treasurer, who's got some strong skills in this area, but again, she's the town treasurer. And we want to move some of that administrative responsibility in an area that makes more sense. And that's not unheard of with some of these CFOs, they do this kind of work.
Right.
So I'll read the purpose that I've drafted, again, draft, 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 this is subject to change. The purpose of the position is perform executive level financial administrative work and direct on overseeing the town's financial systems. This position is new to Holliston and will require the development and updates to financial procedures, regular presentation of financial information via reports or other methods, establishing relationships with departments, department heads, boards, committees, and other relevant stakeholders. The position will also be the human resource manager for the town, for town employees. The position will be the point of contact for employee retiree benefits, develop professional office standards and trainings, prepare job descriptions, job interviews, postings, coordinate hiring, oversee the performance evaluation system, and other human resource matters as determined by the town administrator. The person will need to be self-motivated and able to effectively discuss needs, processes, and actions, and it will be the acting town administrator when the town administrator is unavailable. I've gone into the essential functions, which is really a piece under construction. I'll be brief Mr. Chairman and read several of them. Manages, coordinates, plans, organizes, and oversees all financial services and activities of the town government, excluding those under the jurisdiction of the school committee, and oversees the daily operations of the treasurer and accountant department while interacting with assessors. The daily operations of the, excuse me, with the assessor to source relevant information for all financial management matters. In this case, a lot of the models have the three financial, you know, heads, if you will, of town government, the assessor, the accountant, the treasurer, all under a CFO. Our assessor reports to an elected board, which is not common. So we're not trying to usurp the role of the assessors who the principal works for, but rather build a bridge, interact with, and source information relevant to filing the taxes and so forth, the tax rate and so forth. The individual strategize with the town administrator and select board to review and development plans, policies, and objectives, recommends organizational, procedural, financial strategies and changes, presents periodic updates on town fiscal matters, including annual budget preparation, tracking, and recommendations to the select board. It is the point of contact for all town boards and committees for financial matters related to the budget. Serves as the finance committee liaison by attending all FinCom meetings, making presentations, creating and distributing financial documents, and responding to all financial data on a timely fashion, in a timely fashion. On behalf of the select board, oversee the town's yearly budget process from commencement to conclusion by preparing the semi-annual budget message before each town meeting, determining the annual revenue and expenses needed to balance the budget. It will include the compilation of all financial warrant articles, town meeting motions, dissemination of timely information of boards, committees, and so forth. Going on, assist in the management of labor relations with town unions by determining the financial costs of all proposed negotiations, positions, and maintaining union personnel cost file. Provide support and guidance to the town administrator for benefits, procurement compliance, policy matters, legislative matters, and so forth. Collaborate to build a strong employee relationship to nurture better communications and bolster in-house personnel, personal development. As de facto human resources manager, offer training, skill development, and teamwork opportunities across all town departments. So thus far, that's where we land. There's still a little bit more I want to suss out from the descriptions. And finally, I'll probably get to the educational piece. I'm leaning towards a bachelor's degree in finance or accounting, and a master's degree or BA preferred. In terms of money, it's a little bit all over the road. Many of the communities that have the finance director acting as the accountant are paying between 90 and $124,000. These communities, by the way, that were part of our sample include the following: Medway, Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastham, Brookline, Hamilton, Orleans, Sudbury, Sherburne, Harvard, Amesbury, and then Bellingham, Ashland, and Millis. I don't have anything from Hawkington, but there was some information that we discussed earlier relevant to the town manager's presentation of financial information that we did review. So simply put, this salary is probably going to be over 100,000. I don't know yet where it will be. What I want to do, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, is take the draft, once it's in a better format, and get it back to the working group, solicit their input, and kind of stir it up and let it breathe a little bit before we come back and finalize what we think will be a final job description to share with the finance committee.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Tina, any questions?
Yeah, a couple. Those list of comparable towns, how did you choose those towns?
It was a blend of both opportunities. So you Google, you know, existing openings, those came through, there were three or four of those. Mr. Ritter has a file of, I think, Jeff, you sent me over 10 of them, that were more, some of them were contemporary postings, some went back as far back as '04, and I didn't use those. But it was representative content, and that's really why he sent them to me. And then Mr. Murphy from the finance committee sent me a few as well.
So those towns weren't necessarily selected because they have similar demographics, they have a similar tax base, they have a similar average per capita income?
They were not selected for that, but it does represent similar, it represents many of those similar communities that have those characteristics, such as Millis, Ashland, Bellingham, Medway, Foxborough, and Sudbury and Sherburne. Those are comparable towns.
Okay, that's interesting, because one of the pieces of advice I gleaned from this weekend, and this is side with the conversation, but it's about negotiations for CBA agreements, CBA contracts, is to develop your list of 10 to 12 comparable towns, using things like demographics, population per square mile, and...
Several of these towns popped up on our department head's salary exercise last year. And I know Jeff's office maintains a list of those types of communities for comparisons. But not all of them have CFOs, and that's where things get a little different. Amesbury, Bellingham, and Sudbury all have CFOs as of now, so.
Okay.
And again, I have to revisit the Hawkington model. I seem to think they do, but I'll double check.
I heard they do.
If I could ask the committee, Mr. Chairman, for one piece of insight for the purposes of titling, do we want to call it the chief financial officer? Do you want to call it the assistant town administrator? Do you have a desire to, you know, change it or...
I think the chief financial officer.
Okay. Tina?
I actually like the sound of assistant town, not like the sound, but I like what assistant town administrator implies. I think that fits well with our bylaws, which have the town administrator creating and determining the operating budget. So in that sense, it makes sense to me.
You could do a hyphen?
Yeah.
Chief financial officer slash assistant town manager?
I don't see it as a major argument or discussion to have, but I think that that bylaw is worth coming up again in the working group, is how it's set up currently with the operating budget falling as a responsibility of the town administrator, and how that's going to settle out with this position. One other thing with the develop, with one of the job descriptions, which is to develop policies, I've made it, said this before, I think that Holliston would do well to have a long-term investment policy. So I'd be excited to see that be something that the CFO position brings, just as a...
And you know one thing, Tina, I made a note after I was drafting this, that I want to bring in the word capital planning to this somehow, but not in a way that steps on the finance committee's bylaw responsibility. Maybe collaborate more. We need to be looped in and coordinating with them, so.
The last question I would have is, you mentioned HR, and I'm wondering if you envision the schools as a part of that HR, under that HR umbrella? And the reason I ask this is because at the strategic planning event that they had on Friday night, Brad Jackson, as one of his strategic plans for the budget that he's looking for is a HR person to manage all aspects of, I think it's 529 employees at the school. So they're envisioning one FTE for that, and I didn't know if there was overlap, if that's worth considering, or if you envision, if this role's envisioned to non, to address HR for non-school employees.
There's a tethered line there, I recall, you can weigh in if you have a recollection, it's been a month. I recall Keith Badeh and Mary discussing that dotted line. Keith talked about the regular communication with the town treasurer for benefits and things like that. I don't remember the details and the depth of what Mary may manage for them. Obviously, she runs the payroll for them and all that, but I think at the end of the day, there is, there is space here for the benefits anyways, to be managed on behalf of the schools. How much space is that? I don't know.
Okay.
And I did not hear from Keith that he was, you know, in any way concerned about turf. I think he was very, he was very respectful of Mary's role and the work she's done to date. So I'd consider that a plus going forward, so. Room to grow.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome. I'll probably have something in the next week or so.
Perfect. Any other business, Mr. Bronin?
Yes, sir?
Tina?
Yeah, there were two things I wanted to, well, two things I wanted to bring up, and then one thing I want to go back to earlier in the conversation. Again, not to harp on the weekend, but in terms of public engagement and transparency, the idea of going into executive session after a board meeting certainly came up as something that is a step to garner more public engagement and create more of a sense of transparency, so that if this board were to go into executive session, we would be doing it at the close of a public meeting instead of at the start. So I put that out there just for discussion and for consideration. I'm curious to hear your thoughts on that. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was the idea of a tri-board meeting between the finance committee, the school committee, and the select board. Sort of as a best practice in a couple different areas, but certainly ahead of what we know is most likely coming, which is a request for a statement of interest for the Massachusetts School Building Authority Association, the NSBA. And the idea of a tri-board meeting to kind of put that SOI and all that it implies down the road, many years out for sure, but to put that in the context of other town priorities that this board certainly advocates for and tries to, and works to advance. So a tri-board meeting becomes a very effective way, if done right, to get the right people in the room to have that conversation. So I just wanted to advocate for a meeting sooner rather than later, in the sense that I think the SOI needs to be filed by April, maybe end of March. And it also is assigned to the community, I think, of the level of collaboration that I think is being asked for at times from the three committees and boards. So wanted to put that out there. So curious to hear your thoughts.
Well, we have Mary working on a capital plan for us of priorities that the select board has. So my thinking is we need to see that first, when she's done with it, before we schedule a tri-board meeting and hash out what our priorities are as a board. I would think that would be the order in which things should be.
Okay.
I concur. I have no objection to have a tri-board meeting. I think my position on it is, there's a limited timeframe this spring to kind of fit that kind of an agenda item in for all three boards. But if we can do it, it's time well spent to at least discuss priorities. I don't feel prepared for that meeting until after we get a chance to evaluate the model that Mary's working on for us.
Right.
Because I think it will contain elements for planning that, you know, we need to sort of put our fingers on, and the timing of it. I know the finance, I mentioned this to the finance committee a week or two ago, and he, the chairman of the finance committee, had not read the email, and he had not taken any action to really discuss it with his own committee. They meet weekly right now as well, and I think he feels like his plate is full. But I have no problem, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of us, if you want to suggest we convene a meeting with the schools and invite the FinCom if they want to attend on a, I would recommend a Saturday afternoon, somewhere like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Just to kind of air it out and let people know where we stand, because certainly the statement of interest looms as another annual visitation of a project that, right now, is colliding with our interests. And until we see the model and understand how to navigate this, I mean, I'd put that meeting off at least until mid-February.
Yeah, I mean, we need to give Mary some time to do what we've asked her to do.
Right.
And I think to be respectful of her with her schedule, she's pretty busy, so let's give her some time.
Well, she said when I tasked her with it, she said that she was busy trying to get the W2s out, so she was pretty much baked through the end of January.
And she told me she is really, really busy training people too right now. She's got those new people, so.
But, and what she did is, you know, I gave her the model of what we were looking for.
Right, right.
Then she sends that out to the rating agencies and the borrowing agencies, they give her back information, then she compiles and builds for presentation. So it's work, but I mean, it's just something that had to be prioritized. So I think she said she'd have it ready for us by the second week in February.
Well, I don't really want to plan a meeting until I know from Mary when she thinks she'll...
Okay, so just so you know, and the board knows, I have tentatively scheduled a school committee to come in next week on the SOI. So what I'm hearing from you is that you want me to postpone it?
Yeah, yeah, because we need...
For like two weeks?
At least.
I spoke to Stacy last week, and I think she was going to reach out to you about postponing it. So you should ask her what day works best for her, but I would recommend...
Originally, I was trying to get them in tonight, and then she said, no, that was too fast. Let's do it on February 3rd.
Well, I would say to let her know that we're going to postpone it until we've been able to go over the report with Mary.
Yep.
Who's been instructed to work on this capital project for us.
So there's two things, Mark, there's our meeting with them on the matter of the statement of financial interest.
Right.
And then there's Tina's question, the tri-board meeting.
Right. And I think that, you know, getting Mary's report is going to help us facilitate both of those, so.
Okay.
So for now, you want to put off the SOI for two weeks?
Well, check with Mary first to see what's realistic of her getting that to us. And then we need to have a meeting to go over that with Mary.
Correct, that's embargoed. I don't want that shared until we get our chance to look at all the data.
And then we'll be happy to meet with the school committee, and we'll talk about the tri-board meeting. But we need to go over this information with Mary, which is going to be quite a bit of information first at our board meeting.
Yep.
Well, it'll be an open, public meeting.
Of course.
My guess is, if I could speak for the chair, based on the conversations I've had with her, she, my guess is that they would not want to come before this board to talk about the SOI until there's that understanding of the debt model that's been asked. So if I'm to time it out, I'm saying, I'm thinking, if I'm hearing all of this right, that if there's a rating call on February 5th, it's probably reasonable to expect that Mary would have it prepared for that rating call on February 5th.
She might.
Okay. Assuming that, then there'd be a period of time after that, that this board would discuss it with Mary. discuss it with Mary, and then I think...
And then we would have to make a decision on our priorities, and then we can do the meeting with the School Committee, and we can also do a meeting, plan a tri-board meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
And then there was one last thing. Coming back to your comment earlier, John, when you were speaking to, I think it was Mary, as we were looking at the debt budget, you had mentioned putting in articles potentially, possibly for special stabilization funds for both the Middle Sex Retirement Fund and the HCA funds, do I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a question?
Well, so I was struck looking at that debt budget, that there's a 45% decrease in a, what was last year, fiscal year 20, I should say, about a $5 million budget, just shy of that. So I was looking at about half of that as a reduction going into fiscal year 21, so I honestly found your comments interesting at that time, to talk about these two stabilization funds. I'm thinking there's some thinking there, and I'm wondering if you want to expand on it at all.
No, the first one, the stabilization for debt came from Mary. She uttered that the rating agency advisor strongly recommended that we do this. It was kind of a curious request, but then I guess it makes sense, he wants to see a sum of money accumulate, and then the town make a large payment rather than anecdotal 20, 30, $40,000 payments here and there. I think he wanted to see a dedicated account to tackle this. And there's no harm in doing this, some communities have multiple stabilization funds. We have one.
It appears as though the state is trying to do a better job at that, too.
Well, I think there's also a realization that these unfunded retiree counts are becoming a burden for a lot of communities, that they're like ticking time bombs. This community recognized that several years ago with OPEB, and is aggressively dealing with it in a way that other communities aren't.
And we should really recognize Paul LeBeau and the Finance Committee for recognizing it several years ago.
The second item is the host community agreement. I've always been frustrated that the funds that come into the town through those agreements kind of disappear. There's no real financial, that's the wrong word, accountability's not the right word, there's no real financial reporting of what we get each year, and then where it goes from there. And we should see a very clear line of the money coming in and going out, because when that, when those HCA funds dry up, I want people to understand that that's what it was for. It was never meant to be a sustainable cash flow to provide for X, Y, and Z. It's there to, you know, improve, in my mind, public health and public safety infrastructure. Right now, the monies come in, they allegedly are not spent, they revert to free cash, and then they go as free cash elements where free cash goes.
Right.
Either spent on capital items in the fall, or deposited into our various capital or sustainability, stabilization accounts. So it's, it's got a murky end.
Yes.
And I would just like to see a little bit more accountability to that process. That's all it is, Tina.
I definitely think there's a lot of support from both Youth and Family Services and the Fire Department on those HCA funds ending up in a stabilization fund. When you say public health and public safety, I really like that, the idea that it's not just public safety nor just public health. I do think we will see requests for very specific initiatives and goals in relation to those two things.
Now, it's not to suggest that, it's not to suggest that over the last year or so, since we've been getting those funds, that we haven't spent them.
Right.
Okay? We have, to some extent, and/or saved them, they've become, they've become part of our fall town meeting exercise and dispersment. This will help us identify exactly where they went, though, with more clarity.
Last question, the one-time payment you're talking about to a stabilization fund for the Middle Sex Retirement Fund, what do you, like, in that conversation that you had with Mary, is this an annual thing? And is it the size of what we do for OPEB?
No, it's dramatically smaller. I think she said the amount that we are in arrears is somewhere between two and three million dollars, and the last payment we made was $40,000.
So we kind of pick a target date to be fully funded?
Yeah, well, I think what we have to do is alert the Finance Committee that as we appropriate funds for OPEB or some of these other funds, we need to be mindful of this obligation. And with the stabilization fund now, we can definitively say we're going to be putting, you know, X dollars in, and if it's, say, $50,000 every year, it just sits in the stabilization fund until it becomes maybe 500,000, you make a payment. And that was what the rating agency advisor mentioned to Mary, instead of small little payments, which sounds like inattentive, you know, action towards a big problem, you're sending a large chunk because they're accumulating in the stabilization fund.
But in regards to the stabilization fund using the HCA money, that's a debt, that's a stream of funding right there from the HCA payments, what do you see as the stream of payment into the Middle Sex Retirement, that kind of a stabilization fund?
Hard to say. I mean, I wouldn't want to jump the gun on whatever the Finance Committee's doing. If I was on the Finance Committee, I'd probably evaluate how long it will take to eliminate that balance owed. I'd probably look to minimize disruption on the bottom line, and in other words, if we're giving, and this is just me, I'm not on the Finance Committee, but if it was me and we're putting 1.4, 1.5 towards OPEB, I'd put 1.3 or 1.4 towards OPEB, move 100 of that now into the Middle Sex Retirement debt. That's just me, it doesn't change your bottom line spending, but it shows a different path of savings towards both debts. So, that's just me. They could look at it differently, that's why they get elected, so.
Jeff, anything under any other business?
Nope, I have nothing else.
Okay.
When is the warrant expected to close again?
It's on February 6th.
February 6th.
And we did have David Nickerson resign from the Cable Board, and we want to thank David for all of his service. We appreciate it immensely.
Mr. Chairman, if I, I'm sorry, can I make one more closing? There's been some email traffic relative to the library?
Yes.
And I just wanted to state that, while I think we're all interested in seeing to it that the library gets the answers to its questions, my expectation is, the next thing we'll be doing is hearing from the library trustees about what the results of their study is prepared to tell us. I'm afraid I don't know too much about their study, I don't understand the timeline or the content of what they're looking to do. There's been a lot of talk about available properties, which is all fine, well and good, but I don't think people should have any expectations of, you know, available commercial properties as a solution until and if a plan surfaces. We need to see a plan from our friends at the library to show what is the urgent need, and what type of resources do they need from the town. So, to me, it's just cart and horse, you know, I'm all for helping and, you know, all that, but I think we need to manage the process by asking our friends at the library to inform us what their plans are for the study and when we can expect to hear from them.
Right. And then, of course, that was voted on at town meeting to approve this study, so we're...
Through a citizen's petition, that's right.
Yeah, so we're awaiting the study.
Right.
So since it's just conversation, let me toss this idea out there, in the sense that the downtown is a place that strengthens a community by offering many services to its residents. So the idea that if property in any location in the downtown area comes available, it is an opportunity for the Board, on behalf of the town, to look at it as a potential building or space for services of any kind. So the library obviously jumps to mind because it's right there downtown, but there are other services, other departments that could serve the community through the downtown, and so in my mind, I see a parallel to what the library would do downtown to what any department could do downtown, what other services might be available to be brought into downtown when property becomes available. My two cents to that conversation.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm never in any hurry to remove a property from the tax rolls and put it on the town ledger. It would not produce downstream tax benefits, so the first desire should be to see any vacant building or building for sale rejuvenated and brought back in so it can continue to generate tax income, so.
I do remember, and I'll take corrections in my thinking on this, I do remember the assessor coming and talking about the fact that there was commercial space that was not in use, that was not, yeah, being, I might have it wrong.
Utilized, yeah.
Yeah.
There's always commercial space that's not rented or vacant, and that's accounted for, and they do assess for that type of vacancy. But what, my point, Tina, is simply, whether it's a bank, or a commercial building, or a warehouse, if it's vacant, my personal goal is always to try and get it back up to a point where it's making money and producing some kind of taxable income. If cities and towns are more geared towards taking properties offline for their own use, they're removing the taxable benefit of that. So structurally, it's, that's how, that's how I start to look at it. I'm not immune to what you're saying, 1750 is a good example of that, when it came on the market, it presented an opportunity, and we took it. Nine Green Streets, another one, I mean, for a lot of reasons, we took that. So, we do seem to have the property needs, but in this case, I just wanted to set the table in terms of, you know, how is this moving forward? And I think, Mr. Chairman, my expectation is, if the libraries have a study going on and they have some interest on an outcome, let's hear about that before we start making any, you know, winks or nods or handshakes towards something that may or may not be part of the plan.
Yeah. Let's not put the cart before the horse.
That's all, as simple as that.
Two more things, they'll be really quick. One is, I think, Jeff, we have something to sign for the Complete Streets?
General.
Okay. The second is, I meant to bring it up earlier, I apologize, the Traffic Advisory Committee, when we last met, I may have said this already, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself, would like to prepare an article, a placeholder article for the warrant, for some possible equipment for traffic management and enforcement.
That's the first I've heard of that.
Okay, then I hadn't repeated myself, and I'm saying it for the first time. Wanted to bring it to your attention as a possible placeholder.
Okay.
We meet again in March, the Traffic Advisory Committee?
Okay, yeah.
I think they'll be...
The warrant closes on February 6th.
Right.
Shortly after that, you'll have on your agenda, as a routine item, annual town meeting articles.
Okay.
And we'll be inviting people in to make presentations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second? All's in favor? Aye, we are now adjourned, it's 8:20. Thank you very much, everyone, for listening in tonight. Good evening.
Thank you.